Well, it is after five thirty-nine. Kind of waiting on a couple people. Our minister did not make it. Oh, here comes the legal. Our minister did not make it, so we're gonna let Jared's been nice enough to voice her prayer before. Kind of picked on, I think, about almost everybody in the room. I know there are some new faces, I could've picked on you, but I'm afraid my wife won't let me back in the house tonight, so I don't want to pick on her, so I'll pick on Jared. Appreciate him voicing our prayer, then we'll have Councilman Marcy lead us in pledge.
Please go. Dear Lord, thank you first and foremost for the letter, for bringing us rain. We pray that we get more throughout the spring and going into the summer season, so we can fill up the lake. Thank you for the men and women of the council, the leading city, tonight and throughout their tenure as councilmen and councilwomen. Please guide them and make the right decisions for our city. And thank you for our mayor, as well, and our police and fire faculty. Amen.
Please, children, our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have several action items, and I'm sorry, sir, I would've waited on you.
That's okay.
We appreciate it.
I got here in time for the pledge.
Thank you. We do appreciate our ministers, that's the segment we need them to carry for us, and we also have some people in the audience who've helped us out before, but it keeps us out of hot water, we don't need councilmen praying, and so we appreciate the help with that particular item, it's important. We have quite a few items tonight, so we'll get to open it up and get started. Open the regular meeting of Clinton Hospital Authority, Clinton Recreational Authority, Clinton Solid Waste Authority, and Clinton Airport Authority. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Trustee Marcy, trustee Huglen.
Yes.
Trustee Rodoff.
Yes.
And chairman.
Yes, moving to no action items, we'll move to the city manager to report if you have anything for any of these authorities.
I'll be for reasons.
Okay, moving on to audience participation. Anyone who has anything for any one of these authorities, this would be the point where you would bring that up. If you have something of a general nature, we'll have an area later on in our regular city council meeting to bring up general items in the city. Not seeing any, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn all of these authorities.
Some move.
Second.
Trustee Huglen.
Yes.
Trustee Marcy.
Yes.
Trustee Rodoff.
Yes.
And chairman.
Yes, we'll open up the regular meeting of the Clinton Public Works Authority and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Trustee Marcy, trustee Huglen.
Yes.
Trustee Rodoff.
Yes.
And chairman.
Yes, we have one action item, it's a flow-through facilitation that we have been doing for the Clinton Public Schools Board of Education, which has called a general contractor. And any questions or comments on this? Pretty straightforward, we've done several of these.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Steve, are these about done now, or are there gonna be a lot more, or do we?
They're very close to it.
I think it's close, it's getting close to being done, I believe. I'm not sure exactly of the numbers right now. Without the information.
Well, you said that's a guy, I was just curious, is it not gonna go up another year or something?
No.
Any other questions on this? This one is four sixty-one thousand ninety-seven thirty-two. Oh, this is about.
No, that's the balance remaining.
That's what you're saying.
That's why I'm saying it's not very much left.
That's also three thousand, so.
There it was.
There it is, thirty-four twenty-nine. So basically, that's one of the reasons why you're saying that they're running out of road, because you're running out of money, so. Sixty-one ninety-seven thirty-two after we approve this one, and this is for, is it just that one, or is there several? Thirty-four twenty-nine ninety-two. Any other questions? We'll entertain a motion to approve this action item.
Some move. Second.
Trustee Huglen.
Yes.
Trustee Rodoff.
Yes.
Trustee Marcy.
Yes.
And chairman.
Yes. Moving on to the city manager's report for Public Works Authority. Steve, do you have anything for this authority?
Just one item. Last week, I received the Garber draft of long-term twenty-twenty vision on water. Me and Arnold were reviewing that right now, we have a scheduled meeting with them to go through that next week, and we'll have them present that at the second meeting here in April. Talked about the future of water here in Clinton, so, pretty comprehensive report. Have not had a chance to go through it, I think Arnold's been starting to look at it. We'll have a good report in two weeks for you, though.
We got seven tenths out there last night, I think, beginning one or the like.
We have about a quarter inch out there that we had, some way around.
We're gonna say a dense and standard.
Nice, we got about ten inches. Yeah. Five forty-five and that's it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The other day, I just wanted to tell you, we had a way after hours, we had a water leak, six-inch rain coming in Clinton, in my yard. And it's just running up the street like crazy. And so I called Arnold, and his guys come out there and worked from nearly midnight fixing that, and I'm telling them that's not where the leak is, it was line twelve here, and the other line here. They said, no, Arnold said it's here. And they fixed it, and they did a masterful job, and I just, I don't know if anybody ever gives them any credit, but they really worked hard, and they stayed way after hours to get it fixed and save the city lots of water, because that six-inch rain was running full strength.
We appreciate that. I would echo that, you know, I get to be mayor, but I'm also a citizen. We tried for four or five days in a row to water, and there was a flank on the backside of the bridge that was really, I guess, two of them had come up from screws. And so I called, sent Arnold a text and asked him if he could have somebody look at it and describe it, and I walked over it another time and it was fixed. I think we have great employees, we're very fortunate, and I think that's a reflection of what you're saying, but it's also just kind of a reflection of the attitude that goes from the city manager down to the department heads and down to our employees. We have good people, we're very fortunate. I wonder if that's going on your water bill?
No, it's on the wrong side, I had you afraid that it's on the wrong side.
Anything else under the city manager's report?
No.
Audience participation, appreciate that, anything else under the Public Works Authority? Any other comments or questions for this particular authority? Not seeing any, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Clinton Public Works Authority.
Second.
Trustee Rodoff.
Yes.
Trustee Marcy.
Yes.
Trustee Huglen.
Yes.
And chairman.
Yes, moving on to the Industrial Authority. Regular meeting of the Clinton Industrial Authority, we'll open that up and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Trustee Marcy.
Yes.
Trustee Huglen.
Yes.
Trustee Rodoff.
Yes.
And chairman.
Yes. Got a couple action items, first one, considering management proposal with the Chamber of Commerce for Frisco Center operations. Steve, you wanna give us an overview, I know we got this, we get a lot of this in our packet, but give us an overview.
Absolutely, I'd like to introduce a few of the chamber board members here, and their current, Julie, what do you call it?
Chairman.
President. So, they approached me regarding taking over the operations at the Frisco Center after reviewing their proposal and visiting with a few of them, including their executive board. We believe, and my recommendation is that we consider this, to try to streamline, consolidate, become more efficient. Save the city money at the location. This is not a reflection of our current city staff, but I believe sometimes in order to really, truly have efficient operations, you need to look at these kind of things, I think. Julie's here along with Matt, and I think maybe they have some things that they could ask some questions, but I do think their proposal is very intriguing, and I think it's worth us considering, and ask Julie if I see anything, or Matt.
Well, you know, I just think this is a good opportunity, I think it shows the strength that's grown and developed between the city and the chamber. And it is, I think it will just make everything more efficient and flow easier, because as it is now, there's a lot of gray areas. When there's two entities that are trying to manage the same thing, and you know, which booking meetings and things like that. So, I just think it would make it a lot smoother transactional.
Can you tell me, Julie, what you're gonna do, that you're not doing now, for the thirty thousand? I didn't understand that too good.
Well, we will take on, as far as promoting, advertising, things like that, we'll have the whole staff, the whole Frisco Center staff under the chamber. We'll do, I think it's on the third page, it kind of lists some of those things that we'll do, but it's just gonna be taking on, like I said, advertising, the whole meetings, making sure that we have all the supplies that we need for meetings, you know, things that we don't really do as of now.
Do you want to hire any more staff, or?
We will, I would like, I don't know, some of our part-timers may be leaving, because they're graduating college and such, but we will need part-time staff. I will not hire another full-time staff at this time, I don't think that that will be necessary. We've hired Jenny Newlook, and she's gonna be, she would be the person that would be the operations manager. And so there would always be that one face that, if you came in and booked a meeting, you would always deal with Jenny. So there's no dealing with three different people and getting three different answers.
Councilman Marcy, elaborate on that a little bit, so clarify that, it's a simple consolidation move, we hear about that a lot in business. And that thirty thousand is basically what is budgeted, there are parts of that, it's not the entire budget, parts of that are the current Frisco Center expense budget. As Julie alluded to, some of just the daily things, from janitorial supplies to office supplies, meeting and events, things like that. What this will allow the chamber to do, and specifically Julie, her staff, is just everything's under one roof, if you will. And so Julie's able to hire our own people and manage the Frisco Center as well as the chamber. And the way we presented it to Mr. Hewitt is that Julie will still be able to be, you know, out in the field, not only represent the chamber, but the Frisco Center, and any calls or anybody that comes in for propositions to rent the Frisco Center, Jenny will be there, you know, on site. So we'll have, you know, people covering both aspects if any questions come up or anything like that.
Will you have, anytime there's any kind of immediate of any kind, will someone from the representatives of Frisco Center be there? I think that's been an issue sometimes in the past.
That will, and that's what Jenny as the operations manager would do. She, you know, you would start your meeting with her, and you would end your meeting, I mean, she would be there through the whole meeting, and so she would be that representative that's on site.
Mrs. Brad, who will she work for?
Steve.
Tyler will remain a city staff member, according to agreement. We still want some involvement with our facility, it's our facility, our infrastructure.
Right.
So although she'll work directly underneath the chamber, she would remain a city staff member of city benefits, but, and that keeps some involvement with my staff.
Will she normally, on a day-to-day basis, report to Julie?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions from anyone on council related to this particular proposal?
Trustee Huglen, I didn't read that yet.
It would go, it would.
I saw that in the past, up here. Any other questions or comments from anyone on the council? Any questions or comments from anyone in the audience related to this particular proposal?
I make the motion that we enter into this proposal with.
Second.
Trustee Rodoff.
Yes.
Trustee Huglen.
Yes.
Trustee Marcy. And chairman.
Yes. Back to the action items. Consider approval of the private placement memorandum regarding the construction of the new fire station, the rehabilitation of the existing police station. Steve wants to be in the last one for.
This is simply a document that, basically, describing the note that we will have with O B and T for the fire station funding. That is really, if you have more technical questions, I haven't heard of a pre-verse, turning, basically, that's just describing the note itself for me dollars.
Is that on the road when you borrow a lot of money, you gotta have a lot of paper? While these, they're all about that thing, so, I'll remember that when I borrow any amount.
This should be the last one, sorry. If you scroll down.
Yes, sir.
There may be a blank that needs to be filled in.
Okay. I'm down through here, you guys can direct us there. Cost of issuance.
Right, the cost of issuance is four thousand thirty-three dollars.
So we will say that is an addition of four thousand zero three-three.
Correct.
In those sense. That is the cost of issuance, and I would assume that total below there would be four million, four thousand thirty-three dollars.
Correct.
I am. Any other blanks? So we would be entertaining motion to approve this with the addition of four thousand thirty-three dollars of issuance costs. Any questions or comments from anyone on the council?
Well, I guess I have a question.
You always have good questions.
That means I might not be able to answer.
Why do we, you have a note, why do you need, what's this really, what's the real purpose of this document?
Apparently, at some point, the state legislature decided that municipal trust did not have enough oversight on lending, lend and borrow, or not lending to borrow, so they implemented a procedure whereby you have to file some documents with the Secretary of State. And this is, you file an initial, which we approved when we did loan, an initial private placement memorandum, and it has a bunch of blanks in it, and we filed it, I don't know why, and hence, we follow up with a final private placement memorandum that gets the exact cost of everything, the final estimate of everything.
Is this once you've selected your lender, that you do this after that, or?
Well, and that's part of the process, actually, you know, the timing is five days prior to consummating the note, you have to have the preliminary private placement memorandum of Secretary of State. Fifteen days afterwards, you have to file the final private placement memorandum. So it's their protocol, you know, it's as much.
State law.
It's cut for instance, yes.
And is this a very new law or interfered, I don't remember the full.
Right. Honestly, I can't feel that kind of a little bit.
I'm sorry, I asked any questions.
Any questions? Any other questions for council? Any questions from anyone in the audience related to this final private placement memorandum? Not seeing any, we'll entertain a motion to approve it, and with the four thousand thirty-three dollar addition in the blank, and a total of four million, four thousand thirty-three dollars, fill in the next blank.
Fill in. Second.
Trustee Marcy.
Yes.
Trustee Huglen.
Yes.
Trustee Rodoff.
Yes.
And chairman.
Yes. City manager's report for the Clinton Industrial Authority.
Counsel, just to wrap up on the chamber, one last item, just to say, we appreciate the chamber's efforts to try to make this thing work. I also want to take the time to say thank you to the police and her efforts over the past eight years to work very hard in getting the conference center open, and her efforts to try to make it successful, she did a very good job. And this is not a reflection on her, we just want to try to be more efficient, that's what this new manager's coming to try to do, that's what I'm doing at this point. But I really appreciate this partnership, I think it's gonna be very successful in the future. And there are some final details I will work out with Julie and her executive staff on a couple of details, but we appreciate the council understanding, this is a good move for the long term, and that's all I have.
Audience participation for the Clinton Industrial Authority. Any questions related to this? Not seeing any, we'll adjourn, entertain a motion to adjourn this particular authority.
Some move. Second.
Trustee Huglen.
Yes.
Trustee Marcy. Trustee Rodoff.
Yes.
And chairman.
Yes. Moving on to the regular meeting of the Clinton City Council, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some move. Second.
Councilman Huglen.
Yes.
Councilman Marcy.
Yes.
Councilman Rodoff.
Yes.
And mayor.
Yes. I have an action item, consider ordinance eight thirty-one A regarding repealing of all exemptions associated with lodging tax collections. Steve, if you would give us an overview.
The council, Deborah Blanchard, our city treasurer, has been asking me to look at this for quite some time. When we began to dive into this and look at the growing trend of communities across the state, exemptions, basically, we don't allow any more exemptions, basically, when it comes to lodging taxes for cities. And I'm gonna ask her to kind of give you a brief synopsis of why we brought this to you, but. Before I say anything more, never just.
Sure. Our lodging tax and ordinance was passed in two thousand when we started the lodging tax to fund the operation of the conference centers, but we don't buy people in two thousand, lodging tax began being collected at that time. When this was drawn up, Paul Tomanning was the legal counsel that worked on the ordinance, and he based that ordinance off of Stillwater's example, and it's funny, I found this in my file that I still have, Stillwater's information they sent us back in two thousand when we were doing all this work. What I didn't see whenever we were doing all this work was, they had already amended theirs, they passed theirs in eighty-five and amended theirs in ninety-eight. We did this in two thousand, not knowing that they had amended it, but we did exemptions. What the exemptions do is, it allows them to claim, people who come and stay at the hotel, the room rents that are exempt from the lodging tax have been defined as permanent guests, defined as an occupant who occupies a room for at least thirty days or more, consecutive days or more. And then other exemptions such as government agencies, churches, schools, nonprofits, things like that. They have to provide, those have to provide us their tax, they have to provide the hotel motel owner the tax exempt status certificate, why they're exempt, fill out a form, document it, sign it, they have to provide all that information. The thirty-day room rents, the people who are renting those rooms for long periods of time, what we allowed the hotel motels to do is provide us with a log of this person's name, went in on this date and is still continuously in the room. Or went in on this date and went out on this date, and it's usually sixty, some have been very big. Some of those, just in the last twelve months, the amount of room rent, rents, we have eleven hotel hotels in our community, seven of those are claiming exemptions. Really only two or three are claiming large numbers of exemptions for those thirty-day guests. Not very many of them aren't necessarily government agencies and things like that, it's the thirty-day guests, they're using them as apartment rental type things, but as long as they're still called a hotel motel, it is a lodging tax. What's happened is they're renting blocks of rooms, or they're renting rooms for long periods of time. Those seven that are claiming exemptions, or their guests are claiming exemptions right now, over the past twelve months, have had a million five hundred thousand dollars in exempt room rents, which amounts to about seventy-six thousand dollars in lodging tax. But what we have found over the last several years, and I have addressed this once with our prior city manager, and wanted to bring it to you at that time, we have found that some of the hotel motels, while considering a thirty-day guest exempt from our lodging tax is part of our lodging tax procedure manual and ordinance, that does not make it exempt from state, city, and county sales tax. We have found that a few of the motels have been doing that, not knowing they were doing that incorrectly. That had been brought up in the past, we addressed it with a few in the past, one had been brought up recently, I've addressed it with that one, and they're making corrections, amending their sales tax records. So there are reasons behind that, that I'm also wanting to see this change. Other communities have exempted their, all exemptions from lodging tax. Lawton, Stillwater, I believe Elk City just did it recently. When we go to Stillwater for Clark's treasurer's training, the city of Clinton's not exempt from lodging tax, we pay lodging tax. We are exempt from city, state, and county sales tax, because we're municipal government, but we are not exempt from lodging tax. That's really the reason I would like to pursue this, is to simplify the whole system. The lodging tax would be based strictly on room rents, period, no exemptions. It would make it easier, we have a little bit of a hard time getting proper documentation turned in, we always have had that problem. They've worked very hard to make it better, it just would clean up the situation a whole lot if we could exempt those. Fairly, I'm writing this over.
And council, that's seventy-six thousand dollars that will be in the city funds to help tourism and marketing of our Frisco Center. And I think that goes hand in hand with our conversation tonight, which we want to continue to have. That's capital items, it's growing technology issues, infrastructure, just the overall maintenance, that facility grows every year, I think it goes hand in hand.
Another thing to catch at my attention is, I don't think anyone who originally thought about the exclusion would have anticipated oilfield companies running thirty-day blocks and getting that exemption, I think, so.
Right.
You really can't use an eye, you've pretty much gotta change the whole basis for the exemption, either take it away or leave it, so. Any questions or comments related to this recommendation from the council, maybe from the audience? Any questions or comments related to this particular ordinance from anyone in the audience? Not seeing any, we'll entertain a motion, please make it in the affirmative or negative to make your motion.
Would you affect the. July?
Please have a.
I should know a little bit, it's actually.
It's declaring emergency.
Okay, so we have an emergency, and we can publish it, do some other things, but after we satisfy the hoops, it would be effective under the emergency clause.
Which would give us time to.
To notify all the hotel motels, I would do it with a certified letter, so that they would understand that if this was declared emergency, couldn't we do that in May first, give them that letter now saying this will be in effect in May first? Is that proper?
I'm sure. But I make the motion to adopt ordinance eight thirty-one A with the emergency clause.
Second.
Councilman Rodoff.
Yes.
Councilman Marcy.
Yes.
Councilman Huglen.
Yes.
And mayor.
Yes. I know from working with people on the other side, that's difficult, just for both sides, so we'll definitely clear things up. City manager's report.
Counsel, tonight, I'd like to introduce Jeff Wyfer, you know Jeff, he's our protective police and fire project. Jeff was here today, we had our pre-construction meeting on the police rehab, so that project begins as of today with a letter to proceed, as well as an update on ninety percent plans for the fire station. I asked Jeff to come, and mayor, you go back, a couple renderings, Jeff, you wanna come up and give an update on the two projects?
You've updated everything else I said.
Oh, do you?
Meeting council members, mayor's staff. As Steve mentioned, we had a pre-construction conference with Colony Construction, who will be the contractor on the station remodel this morning. We had a great meeting with Colony and with city staff. We also issued a formal notice to proceed letter to Colony. The anticipated date of completion is November nineteenth of this year, so that's two hundred calendar days, based on their bid. Colony will begin mobilizing on site next week, and we've got a scheduled progress meeting for the first week of May. In that time, they're gonna mobilize on site, the subs are gonna come in, they're gonna start some demolition, or first, we're doing it in four phases, so they'll be doing a piece at a time, they'll get it demoed, built, finished, and then they'll move on to the next phase. And so the folks down in the police department will still be able to maintain operations throughout construction. I was real pleased with Colony Construction and the representatives that they had here today, it seemed very capable. They're also currently doing work in Clinton right now on other projects, so it's nice that they're doing business here in town as well. On the fire station, this afternoon, we have a fire department to review the ninety percent construction dog, we had another great meeting. We anticipate the documents to be complete, and ready to go out for the bid in about forty-five days from now. I brought some images with me, we've got, that's a three-D image there. That's the inside of the apparatus bay looking out. And then we've got a three-D plan with the roof taken off, so you can kind of see inside the facility. And then we've got all four elevations. It's a south elevation there, that's the north elevation. It's the west elevation, we do it east elevation, so. Like I said, we'll give you the fire department, and I think they're very happy with it. Just got some, just that last ten percent we're gonna do, the quality control, and we should be ready to move to it. Be happy to take any questions?
This is what you brought, is the land all purchased now, is that all done?
We will have our final two properties next week. We will schedule demo of those two properties quickly after that, so we will be ready in time for the bid process. And so far, Arnold's staff has got the two properties down, and looking good over there, so, we're moving.
If you, not to be held to this in a later date or recriminated when it doesn't happen, but what would you anticipate bids going out, beginning construction and ending construction, all part of your timeframe?
If we take bids, if we go out for bids in the middle of May, we would take bids in thirty days from that, so that would be June fifteenth, or so we'd take bids, take a couple weeks for getting contracts put together, bonds and insurance, council approval. We would be looking at, you know, probably the first week in July, second week in July, mobilizing, get started, and that'd be a twelve-month construction period.
Exciting, you've got questions by council? Questions or comments by anyone in the audience related to this, if you have any questions, you're more welcome to ask. Exciting. I think it's. I think it's neat. We will probably be around to see if your architectural work stands up to time, seventy-five years like the last guy. It looks good, it's very exciting. We appreciate you for your input into it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Absolutely.
And council, that's all I have tonight.
I have something. We have Landon Anahan to the back, you're back row. He's here working on a Boy Scout badge. Landon, would you tell us a little bit about the badge, what you're doing?
I'm working on citizenship in the community. It is one of the three citizenships of the community, nation and world. I've got world and activist, I mean, work in our nation. And all three of those badges are required for Eagle. And these I need to move up in the ranks. I'm working, this badge will go towards my Life Scout. Yesterday, I had the border review, which is basically the conference for Star Scout, which next coordinates I would be Star.
We have a lot of visitors with us tonight, but we had a large contention and from what I understood, Landon couldn't make it that night, so we, we're always glad to have any of our kids come in, Boy Scouts, young men, I would have to say young men, when you're working on your Eagle Scout, you're working on your different awards, you've got to be a young man because that is a neat thing. I always think it's funny when you talk to people who got their Eagle Scout because it's very impressive, usually there are people who are very successful, so I'm going to claim it has a good future in front of him and good luck on that, Landon. I'm going to take a little purvey under the city manager's report to say that I will be announcing tonight, I'm not going to be running or filing for a third term as mayor, it's been a good run. When my term ends, I will be on the council for almost nine years, both as a councilman for Ward Two and as mayor. I will always consider it a great honor to represent citizens of Clinton. I'm very proud of the accomplishments of our council, been able to work with council members who cared and have taken their responsibility very seriously, giving hours of their time to perform their elected roles. Clinton is very fortunate to have a wonderful group of city employees that are really the backbone of our continued progress here in Clinton and I definitely appreciate them. It's kind of one of the reasons I wanted to do this tonight because I felt like they're here, at least the department heads. And so I'll leave office at the end of the year when the newly elected mayor takes office right after the first year. And I think I leave the city of Clinton in better shape than today in April two thousand four when I joined the council and when I was a great basketball player in my dreams. I used to play basketball and the thing I always did at the end of the game, I was not a great player. Anyone who's seen me play softball could understand that. But I always felt like if I contributed to the team and at the end of the game, the pluses were more than the minuses, I'd have a good game because I was not a great athlete. And that's kind of what I'll take away from being mayor and councilman. I appreciate the people up here and I appreciate the faces that have gone before and I've said this many times, there were good people trying to do the best they could at this job before I got it and there'll be good people trying to do the best job they can after I'm gone. So I look at the pictures around this council, this chamber, you know, I think that's one of the things that a lot of people had wanted to do. Grayson finally got it up and with a lot of different pictures and you go through those, there've been a lot of people who have taken an active role in the city of Clinton. I think that's exciting. I keep trying to get a, put a new picture in of a skinny Allen, but we haven't been able to find one yet, so. But I did want to announce that tonight and take up Steve's time. It's been a good run, but I look forward to seeing who will want to. I wanted to give some people some time to make that decision if they'd like to put their name in the hat for mayor. They have a few days here to think about it and kind of check with their family and do those things. Appreciate it. Anything else, Steve?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, Senator. Any audience participation? This will be your chance, if you have anything you want to bring up under the city of Clinton, to bring it up, ask questions of the council or alert us to something you wanted to bring to us. Not seeing any, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting of the Clinton City Council.
Second.
Councilman Hulan.
Yes.
Councilman Marcy. Councilman Brodel.
Yes.
And mayor.
Yes.